I'd like to call on May 16th, 2022, meeting of the Person County Board of Commissioners to order this time. And I recognize that we do have a quorum. We do have in our audience today Reverend Cleve Brandon with the Administrative Association of Person County. I'd like to ask him to lead us in an invocation and Commissioner Sims to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let us all stand. Let us pray. Precious Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come uncles, we know how. God, we thank you for another day and another day's journey. God, we thank you for life, health, and strength. God, we thank you for allowing the commissioners to come together for another meeting. God, whatever's done, let it be done in decency and in order. God, we just thank and we praise you, God. We ask you to bless the commissioners, God. Bless everyone here, God. And whatever's done, God, we just let it be you, God. Oh, God, let it be done peacefully, God. For we realize, behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. So, God, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this privilege. God, thank you for allowing us to come together. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You will. Please let our flag be signed with may the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For discussion, adjustment, and approval of the agenda, I already have some changes there if you please note. First, remove item number four from your agenda sheet. Item number four, please remove. Then we have a request to add closed session number two for the purpose of discussion of matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the county that's economic development. And next, we request to add a closed session number three for the purpose of attorney-client privilege. Any other discussion or adjustment? We have a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Motion on the floor. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for retiree. And we have...
Yes, sir. Can you get it here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, let's call him up front then. We really want to recognize you. Sir, everybody didn't say your last name. Sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Paul Summerlin has served the people of Person County during his tenure, working for the Person County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff, special assignment as a narcotics investigator and a member of the DEA task force. And whereas Paul Summerlin has served the citizens of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity, and dedication, providing accurate, concise services for 11 years, February 2011 to April of 2022. And whereas Paul Summerlin has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known him and worked with him throughout his career. And whereas the county of Person recognizes the contributions of Paul Summerlin has made to the county and offers him sincere best wishes for his retirement. And therefore, I, Gordon Powell, Chairman of the Person County Board of Commissioners, do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation to Paul Summerlin for continually striving to make Roxboro and Person County a better place to live and work, adopted this 16th of May, 2022, and signed Gordon Powell and attested Brenda Reese. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my pleasure.
Yes, sir, please.
Commissioner Perry, I think is the only one that was on board at the time when we actually brought Paul on board. We had this position brought to us, and if anybody don't know anything about the DEA, we are able to put the little cases in the paper. The big cases, y'all have not seen, and as many reasons that you don't. This gentleman right here has been a part of deals where up to 20 to 30 kilos of cocaine or meth have been taken off. He's been a part of $200,000 to $300,000 in seizure. His very first year, we didn't even have a position, and we had to get special permission through the feds out of Washington to be able to use asset forfeiture money. But he actually earned his own pay the first year, and you can only do that for 12 months. But it is unreal the amount of money through asset forfeiture. County manager and our finance director are very aware of every dollar that comes in. Everything that we have bought gun-wise, y'all have not had to approve it. It's because of the position that he has been in. We're fortunate that even though he's retired, and we do have a replacement that'll start on May 23rd to keep that position. But this has been very worthwhile. We hate to see him go, but he has done... Even though a lot of y'all never even met him, the job that he does, you don't expose to. But it has been a very profitable... He was a part of half of North Carolina, eastern half of North Carolina, but his position also is for the whole United States. So, he's got contact everywhere. But we hate to see him go, but we wish him the best. He, like everybody else, is fixing to go back to work, so I don't know when he'll come back with us. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, point of privilege.
I would like just to say also that this week is National Law Enforcement Week, so I would
like to commend all our law enforcement people in the county and the city. Thank you for your service very much. You are a very important part of this community.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to be the lawyer, but let me point out, if the board wishes that resolution to be a board resolution, other than just a resolution signed by the chair, requires a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is informal comments. 10-minute period set aside for citizens to speak to the board concerning county business. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, we do. We have one individual signed up to speak, Mr. Philip Jackson of Halifax, Rhode Roxboro.
Okay. You're the lucky man.
Thank you. Look at that.
Only one in 10 minutes.
We were wondering how that was going to work out. But God always has a rep in the bush. I wouldn't give you these drawings. First, if I could start here, just passing around... There should be enough for each person here. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. York already and talking about this idea. We've come a little further up the road with the drawing, a rendering, that you can look at this morning and get an idea of what we're proposing. So, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you, Board Commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to come and speak with you this morning. This is something that is very dear to my heart. You know, initially, I was, over the weekend, thinking I was going to have enough time to come in and preach a full sermon, and I'm going to minister the gospel. But I realized that that's not going to happen today. So, how do you say what you need to say in a few minutes? You know, first and foremost, I ran a nonprofit that I started in Durham County back in December of 99. We have some history there. And ran that organization for 19 years, 18 of which were full-time, in the trenches, working with men and women that were coming out of hard places in life, and actually hired them into the program. We set it up like a general contractor service, and we would teach them the construction trades and help them get jobs after they were with us for six months. That worked real well. We were not really heavily funded. Most of the money that we operated from came from contracts that we generated through just the normal bid process of contracting. And I met a gentleman along the way, who... He's my brother, Rick Morgan, right here. He operated a business in Durham called the Reuse Warehouse. And we became quick friends and really brothers. I really believe... He's my brother from another mother. I shut the nonprofit down at the end of 2018 here in Person County. We live here in Person County. Been here almost 18 years. And I shut it down because I saw the floor change, and the people that were coming were younger and younger, where in the past, I had a good mix of people between 18 and about 40, 45. Older ones tend to motivate the younger ones to get moving when they weren't pulling their weight. But as that older crowd began to move out of the workplace, I'm left with a young crowd with no work experience at all, many times high school dropouts, and all kinds of other issues going on in their lives. So, understanding the dynamics of what we're working with, I decided to step back and reorganize. My brother came and nudged me in April of 2020 and told me, Phil, it's time to get moving again. You know, the Lord had been dealing with him out of the book of Nehemiah. And so, we decided to start, having been through what I've been through the last few years of my tenure with the ministry, I decided we weren't going to do anything until we prayed and heard from God. I think it's important to say that. We started praying in May of 2020, and by the time we reached the beginning of 2021, we began to hear clearly what the direction of the Lord was taking us in, which was... Earlier, in a vision, I'd seen a place where men and women were coming in, and they were beat down. They were just really dragging into the place and struggling, had no hope, void of any hope, and it was more of a gray-scale kind of vision. But as they left that building, and they processed through the building, it was vocational training, all the soft skills and types of things going on in the building, and when they left there, their heads were held high, their shoulders back, and they had light radiating from them. And those same individuals that came in without hope, they were going back into the community, and the people that saw them saw the change in their lives and wanted the change. So, that's where the Christian Coalition to End Poverty Now was born out of. A lot of prayer combined with a lot of experience and understanding that you can't just address the job-training piece without addressing the other issues, the moral, you know, issues that they have to deal with in daily decisions, financial literacy, housing, all of it. To really help someone to successfully move through this process of becoming whole, there has to be a place where they can come and get all of these services delivered at one place. We, over the years, we reached out to many nonprofits. We had some solid partnerships in Durham and Person Counties. But one thing that lacked was we were not all together. We all were scrambling for the same funding sources and all those things. This is an effort that we're putting together now through this coalition to bring everything together under one roof so that we can make a difference. Now, I think that the biggest part, I think, that I should mention is that we are the church. This is the Christian Coalition in Poverty Now. I wouldn't be standing here if the Lord had not called me to this work. I would have left a long time ago. Just want to go on record for saying that. I believe that God's mandate on the church is to effect change wherever we go, not to come in and dictate and tell people what to do, but to relieve suffering, relieve people's suffering and the issues that they're dealing with from day to day. I have to tell you, I come from a place up north called Chester, Pennsylvania, which is probably, I think, last I checked, was the second most violent place in the nation. I grew up in poverty. I know poverty well. I was able to go into the Marine Corps and serve eight years honorably, so I'm proud of that. And during that time, I was able to experience a lot of successes, and poverty was far in my rearview mirror. And sometimes the Lord has a way of getting your attention. In the book of Ezekiel, he took the prophet, and he took him down to the river Chabur, where the people were in suffering. They were suffering. And he left them there for seven days. And while he was there, he went down there to preach a good sermon and correct the people, rebuke them, all those other things that preachers do sometimes. But while he was there, the Lord would let him speak. He had to sit there, and he had to see their suffering to understand why they had gotten themselves in the position they were in. And during that 20-year period, working with new beginnings, paying other people while many times trying to understand how I'm going to take care of my own family while I'm helping others, I understood better how people, excuse me, got where they were. And I think with that experience, and I would like to ask the people that are here this morning with the coalition to stand up just so they can be recognized, a lot of good people have been working. And this is a small representation of the group that's been praying, and we're doing an event on the 26th, I believe it is, over at Harris Gardens. You're welcome to come out. The menu is phenomenal. I think you'll really enjoy it. Tom Myers, one of our partners, he's going to be putting together a pretty awesome event for us over there. But you have the drawings. I want to, you know, show you that. Our desire is to take that building and turn it into a resource to the community. We want to provide a vocational training program there, and you can see the different numberings on the drawings will indicate what the purposes of each building will be, but not just the vocational training and a service to the people that are caught up in the system and trying to get out, but also a resource to the community. We'll have a venue space there where people can, you know, have weddings and a number of other things, as well as catering services and restaurants there. So, that's our proposal. I know this was, we're not only agenda, we wanted to present this to you guys. If you have any questions, I think I've got three minutes left, I'll be more than happy to answer the questions I can at this time. And if you have...
No questions. I think I would look forward to hearing a full presentation, so I would assume your request and to be on the agenda at our next board meeting, is that... I don't know how jam-packed that is at this point.
That's your budget public hearing as well as a planning board item. So, there will be a lot of folks in attendance, but we can accommodate this or put it to your second June meeting, which is a day meeting.
Would you have a preference?
Whichever works out best for the board here, we can prepare. Sounds like the second...
I'll say second June meeting, because that gives us... So, that first page was going to probably really back, would stop and give plenty of time to give a presentation.
Okay, sounds good. Who would... Should I reach out to anybody in the meantime if there's certain information you need or just don't resume that here? Well, thank you, Clay, for hearing me out. You know, again, without beating the dead horse, so to speak, you know, I do believe the church is God's answer to addressing poverty. You know, we have, you know, to a large degree, we have awesome worship services, but the answers to the problems are sitting in the walls of the church and in this room. So, I think, thank you all for your opportunity to speak with me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is motion to approve the consent agenda. If you're all in agreement, any discussion, adjustment on the agenda?
Yeah, on the minutes meetings, meeting minutes from the last session, there are some items that are mentioned, some of the speakers. There were three different subject matters. My understanding is that we don't have to report the details of public comment, but if they are, I think they should be complete. So, one of the speakers, Mr. Seep, had outlined three different things instead of just one. That's the only thing that's on there. And then Mr. Commissioner Sims' comments at the end of the meeting are there, but mine are missing, so I would like to add those to the minutes.
I will amuse those meetings and bring them back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or adjustment?
Thank you very much for the detail on the budget amendment, moving of funds. It's very clear. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the result is remove the minutes from the motion that might be made to approve the consent agenda, leave the other two items.
Correct. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda with adjustments stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. I'm sorry.
You made the motion, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Eric, yes.
Thank you.
New business, item number three, new website design overview by Mr. Christopher Here. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As soon as they get me off the screen, they actually bring up the website for us real quick. I'll have it up here as well. There we go. All right. So, our new website thankfully has a fresh new look. With our website, we also received something called a style guide that gives us colors, fonts, icons, things like that. So, when the county manager gives her presentation a little bit later, you'll get to see some of that in her PowerPoint. So, we're very thankful that we have something where we can kind of unify our look all around one central idea. So, the first thing I want to point out about the new website, and this is just for informational only, to give you guys kind of an overview, is on the Service Finder, at the top right there, there's a little orangish button. If you click on that, that will come down. You have the option to do Apply For, Search For, all sorts of different things under the dropdown there. Depending on what you select, on the left, under How Do I, you get different options on the middle. So, I've got someone going through this for me. Go ahead and select one of those. Thank you. And then the dropdown under Register. So, How Do I Register For? And then you would select something like To Vote, a recreation program. And then it gives you the information over on the right, and if you click More, it will actually take you to the page to give you more of that detailed information. And if we give that just a couple seconds, that will forward us over. There we go. So, for instance, that is the How Do I Register to Vote, and it takes you to the state page. So, those can be internal or external. Those are editable by us at any time, so if there's other items that need to be added or moved around, just let us know. So, if you'll go back one for me, Brandon. The next one we want to look at is the search functionality. So, in the new search feature, we actually have the ability to do predefined search buttons. So, for instance, you'll see here the library, elections, one-stop early voting hours, tax office, things like that. Any of those that you click on, which are also completely customizable by us, will take you to that individual sub-page as well. So, those are just kind of quick links within the search that are hot topics at the time that we can change out at any point throughout the year. Next up, we've got the user-friendly navigation. So, we've kind of changed up some things. We originally had departments and services. So, up at the top, Brandon, where you've got government, residents, and all that. Yeah, there you go. So, government used to house just departments and services, and now what we've done is we've changed that around to break some things out. We've got e-notifications, commissioner meetings, agendas, all that good stuff, as well as a departmental breakout. So, that way, you don't have to know which department you're looking for to find certain things. For instance, one of the items we found in our discovery phase of this project was that folks did not know that the Registered Beads is where you would go for a marriage certificate. So, they were searching the website, trying to find marriage certificate, but they weren't finding Registered Beads was the place to go. So, we've broken some of that out in the Service Finder and in some of these other areas. One of the things we want to highlight here for you is the ordinances, which is another one under residents here that we've broken out. That one's been a pretty big request from a lot of citizens and departments. So, this one houses all of our ordinances that we have listed on the website, and that is an example there for you. If you'll go back one more for me, we have one more new feature. This is our public records request, and this is something that we're adding to try to add a little transparency as well as get more detailed information about the request so that we can not have to go back and forth for weeks with the requestor to make sure we actually give them what they're looking for. So, this is the public records request page. And then, Brandon, if you'll click that link for the form, we've built a little form there, which, again, we can modify and make changes as needed, but this gives us a little more detail about exactly what they're looking for so we can get them a quick response and turn that around very quickly. Next up, Brandon, if you'll show the call to action buttons. These are the buttons beneath the picture there. That picture's called a hero image. So, each of these buttons are also customizable, the text, the links, the icons, the backgrounds, all that. So, he's showing a little bit of the interactivity there. We also have the Live, Work, Play beneath those. And then lastly, the final section I want to show you is the Buy the Numbers down at the bottom. So, these will be updated as new information comes in. It's just a neat little counter that goes up as we do each item. If you'll hover over Annual Budget, Brandon, for instance, so Annual Budget there, if you click that one, it actually takes you to the budget, and that number is the approved annual budget for last year. So, if you go back one more for me. And under Registered Voters, for instance, if you were to click on that one, that would actually take you to the elections page. So, we have quite a bit of multiple sources tied back, or multiple destinations with one sole source, I guess, is what we've done here. So, we've got multiple links that point back to the same place to try to make it easier for folks to find stuff on the website. Hopefully, that is what our users are finding out in the world as well. We are open to any comments or conversations, questions about why we did something one way or what we can change to make it better. We know that it's new and different for everyone, but so far, the feedback's been mostly positive. So, that is what I'm... Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I didn't really... I've kind of prused through there, and I'm like so excited because it's fresh and easy to read, and I think people will maybe go to it more for information. But when you go to, say, click on Registered Voters, and that takes you to a different page, it says that you're being redirected to another page?
Yes.
Is there... I couldn't tell. Is there something on there that says, if you don't get the page, here's a link, click on it?
So, Felipe, if you'll switch that, thank you, on the front monitor. So, which one was that we clicked on?
The Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, okay. Go to... It's not going to be there, Brandon. Scroll down to the bottom where we had the voters. Yep. Click on Registered Voters. So... Nope, that wasn't one. It was Register. It's under Service Finder, sorry, Brandon. At the top there, which is on every page, register and to vote, and then hit Learn More. So, that URL in blue there, just above that green button, is the link that it's supposed to take them to?
But does it say if you don't get... Okay, that's what I couldn't see.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all.
But yes, that just lets you know that you're leaving the Person County site, and that's kind of a...
It's got a little timer behind it.
It does. I think it gives you five seconds, so if you don't want to leave the page...
Five seconds, you can hit them.
Yep.
Or if your internet's really wonky.
Well, there's that. I think we're doing some work on that.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's getting better. It's getting better. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for a good job. This is quite an improvement over we had, what we had previously.
We'd had it for eight years, I think, so it was time for a refresh. Pretty much so.
Now that you're up and running with this, how often would you look at potential changes as you get feedback from...
So, as far as modifications to the existing page with content?
Yeah, there's something that may be an improvement there that...
Sure.
Maybe. There might be a possibility, you guys haven't seen.
Sure, absolutely.
I doubt it.
Oh, we've had a couple pop up because basically what they did was they migrated all of our content from the old page to this new one. So, we had a couple of things that were hard-linked to some other stuff that is now moved around because of the way we restructured the menu. So, we have seen some of that. And as those get pointed out, we've brought those in, migrated them over, updated the links, and refreshed all that. It takes us a couple of minutes to do modifications like that. If we're looking at changing a color or moving something physically on the interface, that's a little different. As far as a website refresh, I think we'd probably typically be looking somewhere around a four- to five-year mark to get a complete new design, is what you typically see. But as far as pictures, things like that, those can be modified by departments or us. We did do trainings as part of this process for all of the departments. They were required to have at least one, and most did two or three, folks from their department so that they could modify their sections as well, to try to keep that as up-to-date as possible with all of their information. So, as far as updating the page itself, it should be a very regular recurring thing as departments have more information to share with the public that they would post that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions, comments? Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, the team.
Thank you.
Take care. Item number five on the agenda is UDO Steering Committee appointments.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to talk about the UDO Steering Committee appointment. I have briefly brought this item up before you. And so, what we are looking for for our UDO Steering Committee, we would like it to be comprised of one Board of Commissioner member, one Planning Board member, the Economic Development Director, or her designee, and five citizens, landowners, or business owners in the county, along with two planning staff members. So, this was advertised twice in the local newspaper, was placed on our website, was placed on social media. We received... Initially, we received five applications requesting appointment to the UDO Steering Committee that consisted of Marley Spencer, Sherry Clayton, Barry Allen, Mark Duncan, and Norman Boyette. Barry Walker, the chairman of the Planning Board, has also requested appointment to the UDO Steering Committee. We did receive one application after the deadline from Frank Stoltman. So originally, I came before you preparing to ask for five individuals to be appointed to this committee. We do have six applications. I don't think it would be a stretch if you wanted to appoint all six individuals. That would bring our total committee to 11 individuals. So again, you can either go with the original five recommendation or you could just appoint all six individuals to the committee. We would also ask that you appoint Barry Walker to the committee on behalf of the planning board. And then we do need one board of commissioner member to serve on that committee. I have had some previous dialogue with Commissioner Gentry and she has expressed an interest to serve as the BOC representative. So at this time, I am seeking appointments.
Well, I'm fine with all six serving.
I'm fine with all six. My only question is, is that with the commissioner appointed to the board, me personally, I would like to see that pushed back to probably our next meeting, if we could do that. Is that a legitimate request? And the only reason is, is that I think, like to see our next meeting, I'd like to go through this next primary and then make the decision.
That's a possibility.
There's a reason why, because again, if we put somebody on the board and let's say...
Right. How long is this, this process going to be with the UDO though? Because we're, we have a year, we're already into doing this, correct?
Yes.
So this will probably take us through the end of the year?
Yes.
So I'll be on the board, I know, until December, so. And, and the reason that I was requesting is because of my background in architectural work, building work, real estate work. I think that I probably would bring something to the table, but that, that's just me, it's up to the board to decide.
I understand qualifications and all that, but again, I would like to, if we could push it, push the selection back until our next meeting, which would be the...
June 6.
June 6. Is that a motion? Make that a motion, that would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion for board members? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried, 3-2. Do you have any particular order that you'd like to do this in, Rory, with either Barry or the six members? If we're going with six, does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept all six members, advocates.
To accept the six, six individuals that have applied on, any other discussion?
Is that six plus Barry?
No, no, sorry.
So we're looking at Marley, Sherry, Barry, Mark, Norman and Barry. Stoltman left out.
Oh, Stoltman's right.
Barry's, Barry's going to be on there anyway, yeah.
I can't see that. One, two, three, four, five, six, that's seven. Am I counting?
Yes. I believe the planning board chairs can be a separate motion.
Six citizens.
Yeah, it's coming.
Okay, it just, it just hit me. I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of these appointments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we have a motion for, need a motion for Mr. Walker.
Motion.
Motion to appoint Mr. Barry Walker to the board as well. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is appointments. Appointments to juvenile crime prevention council, Ms. Reeves.
Good morning. I am bringing before the board today two applications for consideration to, for reappearance and apportionment to the JCPC. Dr. Ron Anthony currently is appointed on the JCPC. His term expired. He is the designee for the schools superintendent, so he is requesting reapportionment. And also, Laquita Cozart is requesting apportionment to the JCPC as the via health system of care coordinator who will replace the cardinal innovations representative. As you know, we have transitioned the MCO, so this representative will bring that up to speed. Any questions or pleasure of the board?
Motion, any doubt?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Mr. Anthony and Ms. Cozart to the board.
Have a motion on the floor, discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion, motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda, presentation of fiscal year 2022, 2023, recommended budget for sure.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Brenda will be passing around the budget document for you. You don't necessarily need that to receive the presentation this morning. I'll discover some of the highlights, certainly not going to walk you through that whole document, but you will need that for your work sessions and probably want to bring it to your public hearing as, as public references different points in there. I am going to try to pull up a PowerPoint slide and then walk you through again, some of the highlights of your upcoming fiscal year 22, 23 budget. All right. As you can imagine, a lot of analysis has gone into presenting a recommended budget for you all this morning. We have a great team in place and I'd like to thank our finance department and our assistant county manager and our department heads who have helped pull this together for us. These are some of the dynamics that we are facing and that have impacted greatly your upcoming budget. Of course, the economy with inflationary pressures, escalating costs in nearly everything from cement to office supplies, fuel to employees. And also supporting a workforce that has really been struggling. There are high-stressed employees who have very demanding jobs. We're seeing challenges with recruitment and retention of employees. We have high vacancy rates, we have high turnover rates and just a lot of struggles facing the county employees right now. Each year, as you know, at your board retreat, the board sets priorities that provide a foundation for the funding recommendations in the budget. This year, at your board retreat, you decided to keep the same five funding priorities that we had last year. So we've had two years of consistent priorities. I've listed those for you on the screen. And here's a slight update, a quick update of kind of some of the progress that has been made on the five priorities. So on your economic catalyst fund, improving the economic development process was one of your priorities. We have continued to add funding to that fund, which allows for some discretionary spending of the EDC, the ability to respond to economic development projects and also to support incentive payments. On your airport, another one of the high priorities of this board, we've done a resurfacing of the runway. We have nearly finished construction on the corporate hangar and we have a new website that's underway, which will be revealed at the same time as the hangar completion. And then we began to work on the runway extension project through some earmarked funds from the state budget of $12 million. You completed the broadband infrastructure inventory study. We used the results of that then to work with some private internet service providers to submit three grant applications. And you also reserved 2.75 million of your American Rescue Plan funding to provide for future broadband expansion. So lots of progress on that particular goal this year. Your property tax rate remains flat. That's been a priority of this board for quite some time and happy to say in this budget, there is no change in your property tax rate. And then the schools and the community college, your goal there was to improve school facilities. They both have received the full request that they asked for, for capital, and the board has committed to a financing this year of $10 million that will go to support Person County school infrastructure. And that's the last bullet there, implementing your debt model for that $10 million. All right. Overview of the fiscal year 22, 23 budget. Your general fund budget is at 70.6 million. Just a reminder that the general fund is providing for services that are funded through the tax dollars. We have an increase of about 6.2% in your general fund. And as a way of reference, the consumer price index, which is one measure of inflation, zeroed in on the southeast region's rate for that. Over the last 12 months, we're seeing an increase of the inflationary rate of about 8.8%. So as your budget is growing, much of that is due to just the inflationary costs of goods and services. And then when all other funds are included outside of the general fund, that includes such funds like economic catalysts, Person Industries and the material recycling facilities, Stormwater are a few examples, your budget is 88 million, which is an increase of 9.2 or 11.7%. I will say this is a balanced budget, which I'm required by law to present to you. That means that your revenues and your expenditures are equal. On the revenue side, our revenues come from the following categories or sources of funding. And this is one thing that we talk about that makes Person County unique and different is such a large portion of your revenues are coming from the property tax base with your high percentage of state appraised property in your power, in Duke Energy. Sales tax is growing slightly this year and we've seen some growth in the fees and licenses. Many county departments charge a fee for services. This is an attempt to kind of operate more like a business and recoup some of the costs rather than rely solely on the tax dollars. So we have seen some increases in that. That's become our third highest revenue source for us. And then the fourth one, state and federal funds. We also call these in our governmental revenues. These are used to administer our state and federal-based programs. And these are primarily found in your Department of Social Services and Health Department, although other county departments rely on those as well. Some highlights on the revenues. There's some slight growth in your tax base, about 3.9%, so that's moving in the right direction. Your real property tax revenues, that's 1.2 million. That, contrasting that with your current year, you recall in your current year, you had your property revale, we saw growth of a little over 10% in current year. So that gives you some idea, our increase is about 3.7% in your real property tax this year. Sales tax is seeing growth of about 8%, so the growth is actually slowing compared to what we saw in terms of your current fiscal year. This charges for services, I've mentioned that some of that growth is due to the fact that county employees are now paying into their health insurance so that those contributions are included here, as well as some growth in Medicaid. State and federal revenues are up 452,000. Your fire tax revenues are seeing a significant increase this year and that is due to a proposed new rate, which we'll talk about here in a minute. That's about a 75% increase in the fire tax revenues. And the one declining revenue that we have seen is in our Person Industries. That's due to some smaller outside contracts, so that's declining by about 167,000. That will cause a decrease in your general fund subsidy as well. The decrease there is about $9,000, so your total subsidy in PI is around 600,000 for next year. And then overall, your revenues are increasing by 9.2 million, 4.2 million of that is in the general fund. All right, focusing on the tax revenues, the recommended budget, of course, maintains the tax rate at 72 cents. Your estimated property tax revenue, which includes both DMV and property taxes, is estimated at 38 million. And then the collection rate is consistent with what we've had over the past few years. This is a very conservative rate. Russell and his talented team usually pull in more than the 97.5%, so that will give you a little bit of cushion should you take a hit in state appraised property or business bankruptcy or foreclosure. One cent next year nets you 519,741, so there's some growth there. And now looking at sales tax, you can see in the chart kind of where we're projecting to collect next year. Your total tax rate is 6.75 cents. The county only receives about 2% of this locally, so I wanted to clarify that. We're projecting growth of around 8% and we're anticipating slower growth due to the inflationary trend. So you're providing about $11.2 million in your budget from the sales tax next year. All right, fund balance, as you know, it's required for all local governments. This is to help provide for cash flow as your property taxes are not all paid on July 1. So this helps maintain your operating expenses and provides a safety net for unanticipated expenses in case of a revenue loss. Also allows the county some flexibility in responding to emergencies or in seizing opportunities for economic development. It is one indicator, one of the strongest indicators of the overall financial health of the organization, but one of the measures is the level of fund balance as a percent of total expenditures. And we believe that having a strong percentage there is going to help when you go to the bond market with your interest rate, which will save property taxpayers money as we begin paying debt service for the schools. And we have a strategy of only using fund balance for one-time, non-recurring expenses so that we don't become too reliant on that over the years. And this board had the foresight to adopt a new policy this year where we have set a minimum goal of fund balance of 25%. Anything above that now is automatically transferred to your capital investment fund. So we are transferring 6.4 million to your capital investment fund in your current year. Just wanted to remind you of that. Here is a graphic representative of, a representation of what we think your fund balance looks like. You'll see that there is a dip there, but that we are projecting to still remain above your goal of 25% next year. And here are the appropriations that we're recommending from fund balance in the upcoming budget. So you have 1.84 million appropriated to sustain operating funds. In your current year, you're, you appropriated just under a million. In fiscal year 21, you appropriated 3.9 million. So there's a lot of variation in what we use those for year to year. In the general fund, these are your one-time, non-recurring expenditures that did not meet the threshold to be included in your capital improvement plan, but that are needs that again, would not be recurring next year. You've got 73,000 in your community development project for your landfill to park project, some laptop purchases and registered deeds. And then the last two are placeholders that we use fund balance for, both in health and in Department of Social Services. This is due to the delayed timing of our receipt of state and federal funds. And then we reappropriate those fund balance placeholders back once the grant funds are received. So where does the money go? Here's a graphic representation showing you where your money is spent. And next year, I believe it'll look a little different with the education probably growing due to that borrowing of debt service that you'll start paying in education. But this has shifted slightly year to year. And I'm just going to highlight three of our departments that we talk a lot about and that have growing needs or that the public asks about quite regularly. The first is our inspections department. This graph depicts some of our workload measures by the type of permit that has been issued. So the blue column there that you're seeing is what we're projecting to close your current year at. And so we're seeing continued strong growth, pretty much matching what we had in the previous year. The expenditures and inspections next year are up by about 8.7%. And this increase is mostly due to personnel costs. We've talked about personnel lines across every county department growing. That is the case in inspections as well. And we also have some contracted service expenses for the inner gov maintenance and support of that software system. On the revenue side, they are seeing growth of about 15.6%. So that tells you, that kind of matches what we're seeing with permits that are being issued and the volume of work that they're receiving. We also have a proposed fee... We also have a proposed fee update to address some of the inflationary costs and to bring Person County in line with some of our neighboring jurisdictions' fees. Another department we wanted to highlight is the environmental health, which operates out of the Health Department. Here is just one workload measure that we track. There are many others in this particular department. Environmental health covers lots of different services, other than just the site evaluation applications. And some of those services are also beginning to lag due to trying to keep up with the site evaluations that we're seeing. They've had a lot of demand for that department. We are seeing that budget increasing by about 18.6%. One of the main drivers of that increase is that they're requesting a new position to help with some of the backlog for these onsite inspections that are required. Our current turnaround time for their onsite wastewater applications is right at eight weeks. We have had a low of six weeks and we've had a high of 12 weeks. Our target that we're shooting for is 30 calendar days. So, we're hoping with the new position that we can start getting a little closer to that. And then the last department I wanted to highlight was EMS. There's a lot going on in this chart, so I'm going to just fade that for a second so we can focus on the two graphs there. The first one is calls for service, which is just showing you continued increased demand for EMS calls. So, that's continued to rise. The second graph is a bit more concerning. We call that all units busy. And we are continuing to see, I don't have our current year on there because we're still working on that, but continuing to see times when all of our units are currently busy. And so, sometimes we're sending a supervisor vehicle out to respond to an emergency. Sometimes we're relying on mutual aid of neighboring jurisdictions to help cover Person County when an ambulance is needed. We also rely on our volunteer fire departments to help support that as well. So, this budget is growing next year by about 11.35%. The bulk of that cost is in some new positions that we're wanting to add. There are four paramedic positions in there, which would go one for each shift to help support some of this demand that we're seeing. And then an administrative position, which would be a logistics officer. We're asking for increased funding for some uniforms and personal protective equipment for our paramedics and EMTs. And then we are seeing increased funding for fuel and vehicle maintenance and repair, as well as a solution for the supervisor vehicle to be able to carry drugs that require a climate-controlled storage. And then we've increased employee training as well to help support the workforce there that has really been struggling. So, here are the full-time positions, and I'll try to read those off if you're having trouble seeing that chart. We have a request from departmental leadership for 18 new full-time positions next year. I have recommended 13 in your budget. The ones that I've not recommended were from inspections, Parks and Rec, and DSS. The first one is the Public Information Officer. We've talked a bit about. Next is HR. The one under that is for finance, taking a part-time position to full-time. Then you'll see your five EMS positions that I've mentioned, the environmental health specialist in there. And then we have four positions proposed for your consideration in Department of Social Services. The salary benefits column looks a bit inflated. It includes the full salary plus any sort of FICA or other attached costs, as well as benefits. And our benefits next year, we're estimating about $13,000 per position. So, that's why some of those costs look a bit high for you. All right, I mentioned the Consumer Price Index being about 8.8%. This is the graph just showing over the last couple of years, or last few years, the steady incline in the cost of goods and services. This is that southeast region emphasis that we look at. And so, I'm proposing next year a 4% cost of living adjustment for county employees. I'll note that it was 2012, the last time that county employees received a cost of living adjustment. So, it's been a decade since we have awarded a cost of living adjustment. You all know in your own personal budgets that everything is costing more. And so, wanting to help compensate employees, and we're hoping that that will be a nice retention tool for folks as well, to help them know that we appreciate and support Other ways that we are supporting the county workforce, we have continued to have our merit pay program in place. This is your Pay for Performance, where employees are eligible for either a 2% increase, 2% or 3% increase, depending on the performance of the job. We have longevity pay in place and have had that for many years as a retention tool. We have some increased costs next year imposed by the state retirement system. This is out of our hands, but you're adding nearly $300,000 in costs next year for that. And then there's the health insurance number. Our rate increase next year is 15.6%. So, there's that 13,000 per employee per year total cost for you on health insurance next year is 5.4 million. Vehicles, often discussed during our work sessions, so I'll just briefly mention that I have cut this one quite a bit in this upcoming budget. And the reason for that is that we are just struggling to get vehicles. It's taken us nearly a year to actually have a vehicle onsite that we've budgeted for. So, I didn't want to tie up a lot of your general fund in vehicles that we might not be able to obtain. So, four for the sheriff's office, two for Pats, which have a share of the cost with the state, one DSS replacement vehicle, they have some insurance proceeds helping support that. And then one environmental health, that is your only non-replacement vehicle. That is tied to a new position. So, if you decide not to fund the position, that vehicle would not, would not be necessary. So, your total cost on vehicles next year is proposed at 225,000. Supporting your volunteer fire departments next year, they are requesting, as you know, a tax increase in the fire tax rate. So, they will go from 2.75, your current rate, to 5 cents next year. This is an increase of 2.25 cents. The overall budget then would increase by about 75%. And of the new funding, the money would go for part-time staff of 790,000, some software that they have currently implemented, some ISO bonuses that were paid in fiscal year '22. And then the remaining funds, which is about $42,000, will be reserved for ISO bonuses that might be achieved in next year's budget. So, supporting education, a priority of our board. I'm recommending about a 4% increase in the current expense for the schools. I'm recommending the full funding of capital that was requested. Your CIP projects, I had one change from the CIP that the Board of Education and the superintendent had requested, and that was the ADA updates in the weight room. We swapped that for another project that we're funding out of the current year. And then there's the chart that just shows you the total expenditure for the schools next year. That debt service number is estimated, again, depending on the borrowing and when that payment may become due. Your next slide is supporting education at the Piedmont Community College. And their current expense is recommended at what they had requested, 1.36 million. We also included the $10,000 for the small business incubator. Capital is recommended at what they requested, $60,000. There are the CIP projects. You had quite a bit of growth for the community college next year of about 1.5 million to cover capital improvement projects. And there is their chart of what you're funding next year for them. So, what comes next in this? Your recommended fiscal year '2223 budget addresses the needs of the community, is built on the priorities of the board, and will support your outstanding county workforce as Person County moves forward. You have much to consider as you move from this recommended budget to your adopted budget. And I am looking forward to working with all five of you through that process. Your next opportunity then to receive input on the budget will come at your budget public hearing scheduled for June 6 at 7:00. And I'd like to ask you to confirm these dates and times for our upcoming work sessions. We made lots of adjustments over the last week due to some very busy calendars. So, I have June 8, which is a Wednesday, at 2:00. We are proposing to meet up here unless you would prefer to meet downstairs. We'll need to know the location on that. And then June 9, which would be the very next day, that's a Thursday, at 10:00 a.m. That will give us time to make adjustments and bring back an ordinance to you at your second June meeting. Or if we decide that we need a third work session, we'll then have a week in between to have another work session. Sometimes we need three. Usually, we can accomplish the changes and adjustments that the board would like in two. So, if you'll let me know if those work for you or if we need to make some adjustments.
Let you know now or later?
Either one, either one.
I'm fine with those two dates and times.
Okay.
But so.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'd like to have a day in between. I'd like a little bit more time in between.
Sure.
That's, you're talking about afternoon of the 8th, right back here the next morning.
That's right.
You only have that afternoon and that night to kind of go through and review. I'd like a little bit more time in between the work sessions.
Okay. I think Friday did not work for Commissioner Perrier. So, we could do June 7, which would be the day after your public hearing, a Tuesday, and do a Tuesday and a Thursday, if that would work okay for you.
That would work for me.
That would be fine.
Okay.
June 7, 2:00 p.m.
Yep. Is that time okay for everybody then?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that adjustment and we'll make that announcement. It'll be June 7 and June 9 for your work sessions. Thank you for the feedback on that. And would you be okay meeting up here for those?
Not at all.
Okay. And then our last slide is just where our residents can receive more information about the budget. We put the full budget, we put this presentation on the county website for viewing, printing, anything that they'd like to see. We're happy to help navigate the document with folks. They can give me a call. I put my office number up there. And we also put hard copies of the document, both in the clerk's office and at the library. So, trying to make information accessible to our residents as we move through this important process. Commissioners, that is your fiscal year '2223 budget. And thank you already for the work that you have done in taking the time to meet with me to go through all of this. And we're looking forward to getting to your adopted budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate everything you've done.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Staff. Very well organized and shared with me. I assume everybody else is in agreement. So, it's job well done.
Thank you.
Looking forward to closing it out. Next on the agenda, Chairman's report. Only have one item I'd like to mention, and that is Armed Forces Day on the 21st and the veterans have a sermon at 11:00. So, we'd like to be there to support our vets on that day. Manager York?
No report, sir.
Commissioner Sims?
No report.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yes, as PJ did earlier, I'd like to recognize Saturday through, Sunday through Saturday is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. And as typical, I like to recognize all of our county employees for all the hard work that they do. And it's really getting disheartening to me to watch the emails come in that we're needing hires. I've been trying to reach out to as many people I know that can fill some of these jobs. And so far, nobody's, either they're overqualified or underqualified. So, I think that's something we all could look at because we all know a lot of people in this county who probably do need a job. And this is a good job with great benefits. So, I'm trying to promote. Job growth is, so far, I've been unlucky. But I'm going to keep pushing for it. Thanks.
Commissioner Gentry?
I have the report. Just a quick question for the manager. Do you know what the status is on the emergency management ordinance update? I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah, our staff is working on that. And we will bring that back to you when he's ready. Yeah.
Commissioner Perrier?
And no report.
Okay, at this time, we have a brief recess before we go into closed session. Get everything adjusted, five minutes, 10 minutes?
Yeah, probably five minutes will be fine.
Okay. Okay.